Public meeting called to order. Five forty-five, yeah. Yeah, you may want to say so.
Well. Does it start when the public commenter starts speaking? What's the? Oh, okay, okay. It'll be off for a while. Okay. Okay. What's going on, guys? How are you all?
Any comments, anybody?
No, sir.
Is that alley, is it run east and west or north and south?
So, the house on the corner, I do have something I want to ask. The house on the corner of Park and Pine, is it still for sale? Park and Pine, who did your house was it?
Were the Williams, Chad Williams was living?
Mr. Marcia Chaney lived.
The Williamson's?
Yeah, then some.
Methodist church.
It's Leslie's old house. It was. I don't know if it still is, but it was.
Yeah, then they sold it, I'm not sure. Going to take your water before until Rob gets.
Oh, yeah, you did say, well, you said you were talking to them.
Yeah. He said he'd do it for a thousand bucks a month.
Yeah.
And he'd come by three times a week and do whatever he needs, huh?
Is that what he's doing all over? Is he doing that all over?
He took Tom's.
Oh, he's the guy working on it?
Now, he does some of their other prices, but, yeah, that's, that's all he does, just water.
You do. Unless he's local.
Yeah, he said he too.
Right. You do.
Get all hyped up on that sugar. Yeah. Yeah. All right. I'll take care of it. Okay, I'll get it. All right, I'll take care of it. All right, I'll tell you.
We need to have some music back on the farm, let's put y'all in a home.
Well, I could use that.
Hi, how are you two?
Huh? She said she kind of liked having a driver, though. Been driving everywhere.
You've been her chauffeur. Daddy, you need to retire so you can haul there around.
Yeah. Tap tree? What time would that be? Let me, let me laugh one. I already heard you gotta go.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's normally what they say to me when I'm walking.
Well, he gotta go take care of a bunch of kids at the ballpark.
Yes, he does.
I'd like to rather stay here. All ready? Done now? Make sure nobody's here for the public hearing. If not, we're closing the public hearing. Thank you very much. Turn your mics on, please. Now, we have, uh, Pastor Jonathan Tullis, the Harvest Fellowship Church. Go ahead, sir.
As he said, I'm Pastor Jonathan Tullis from Harvest Fellowship, and I would just like to say thank you to the mayor and to the council and all the officials. Uh, I consider this truly an honor to be a part of this meeting tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, Lord, we ask you this day that this council that is gathered here today be blessed. Lord, that you be honored in word and indeed that every decision that is made concerning this city be for the godly good of our community. Lord, we humbly ask that you lead and guide this city with the governing body that is here tonight and to, Lord, to inspire this body to lead the city and make decisions, Lord, to not only benefit the city but to all be the glory. Lord, we ask for peace and unity and wisdom, not only in this meeting here tonight, but in each household that is represented here. Lord, we ask that you touch each of us in body, mind, and spirit. Father, we ask tonight that your will be done in Lone Oak as it is in heaven, for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Here.
Ms. Stewart.
I figured you would. I don't blame you.
Wendell Walker.
Here.
Janie Durney.
Here.
Stan Moran.
Here.
Sean Simpson. Del Peruthers.
I'm here.
Raymond Hutton. Jim Ed Ransom.
Here.
Shane Hamilton. Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Everyone had a chance to read over, re-vote, read over our previous minutes. Motion Jim Ed to accept previous minutes.
Second.
Second by Janie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Well, going farther, Jonathan, I'm gonna let you jump up here because he's got to get back to the ballpark. And, uh, since we don't have any public comment.
Hey, I'm Jonathan Curry, parsh director. We got rained out on April fifth. We have, uh, we have forty-two teams coming in to, uh, for the day, for the opening day of all season. Uh, we're gonna reschedule that for April twenty-sixth. And, uh, and as far as I know, all teams are gonna be available to come. Uh, also starting to work on league tournaments for May ninth and tenth. And that's, uh, you know, surrounding, surrounding towns, that's England, Carlisle, Hazen, Desar, BB, and, uh, try to get many teams in the canyon to, to have a good, have a good tournament for the league and, uh, also, third thing is Pops on the Prairie contract for the fireworks. Uh, should be a slot, maybe.
It's in here.
I don't know if I'm talking too fast. Oh, did, I'm sorry. And this is a, this is a, this tone is a little different than one last year. We're gonna do it electronically and, uh, let the fire department have a little easier night. Uh, his name's Joey, the guy coming down. I don't know too much about him, but, uh, I know he does a great job from what I hear. Maybe would be recommended by three, three or four people to me, so, uh, if y'all approve that and get the fireworks going, I'm also working on other things, uh, music and, uh, food trucks and a lot of other things I'll do to get that thing going, so.
This is a little less than last year, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Like seventy-five or whatever.
Well, we're not shooting them ourselves.
No.
Yeah, we're not hiring.
No, we have to have a professional.
Yeah.
So we don't, you don't want me.
I'll make a motion, we accept the six thousand dollar bid from J and J.
Motion Jim Ed accepts a six thousand dollar bid, second by Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Are there any questions or anything for me?
Everything going okay?
Yes, sir. Everything's going smoothly.
At twenty-six, Jonathan, is that gonna be like out of town team tournament? Are they gonna be travel ball or is that gonna be?
No, sorry, that's gonna be out of town tournament. It, it, it's, it's the same teams coming in that were, that was supposed to come in April fifth, opening day. Uh, when we had twelve inches of rain. We actually got everything back out there, got, got everybody back on the field by that Tuesday, so I'll, I'll be impressed that.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yeah.
You do.
No, we appreciate it. Anybody got any questions?
Hotels like it when we have travel tournaments.
I know. No, you're free. Get back out there with them kids.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, no public comment, now budget and finance. I'll make a motion, put Resolution four-one-two-zero-two-five on the floor. Put four-one-two-zero-two-five on the floor. Second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
It's Resolution four-dash-one-dash-twenty-twenty-five, a resolution amending the twenty-twenty-four operating budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, appropriating the various amounts herein and for other purposes. Whereas the mayor and finance officer respectfully request that this governing body accept the proposed budget amendments to the twenty-twenty-four operating budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, attached or to exhibit, as exhibit A and incorporated herein by this reference. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of Lone Oak, Arkansas, that section one, the budget amendments attached or to as exhibit A and incorporated herein by this reference to the twenty-twenty-four operating budget are hereby adopted and the final twenty-twenty-four operating budget should reflect the same. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
Make a motion. Any questions before we pass this? Y'all got any questions? And a motion, make a motion except for this from Jim Ed.
Second.
Second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the, we finally got the income tax credit check from our solar array. Was hoping to get a year or so. It was, have y'all read this?
Yes, sir.
Three hundred and fifty thousand five twenty-eight oh three.
What were you hoping?
Well, I, I was just hoping we got that.
That's a nice chunk.
Yeah.
That's a nice chunk.
It just makes things better. We're still losing money, but we're doing, but basically y'all read kind of what you think. We can't pay it on the note. It's a special day. We can't pay till after the five-year period. Then we can put it on the principal and pay the principal down. But that's another, what, a year and a half?
Ten more years, probably. Pay ten more years.
So.
I like, I make.
Can we not put like a hundred thousand in savings for repairs? And then put the, the balance in a CD?
Uh, that's, that's what y'all decide.
Repairs in.
Solar panel.
If we put it into CD, it'll, you'll probably get more money than it would in the savings account.
Oh, well, you're not gonna be able to get it if you need it.
Get them.
Costing you money.
Usually if we pull it out early, it's a three-month.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you, I mean, putting some in the savings account, some in the CD, at some point we know we're going to have to spend some money on it. At ten years, they say normally inverters need to be worked on. That's the average. It may last, maybe longer, maybe less.
What would you do, a six-month CD, a year, three months?
We, we do all our CDs for twelve-month periods.
Twelve-month period, yeah.
The best interest rate.
Yeah.
For twelve months?
Well, that's what they, the protocol that we have to use for the state is to put them in for twelve months.
Six months, you can get higher for six months, you can get twelve. And you said we're paying two-point-two.
Two-point-two-three percent.
We had to dig that out to the, see who gives us the best rate.
Who gets you the best deal, yeah, yeah.
So. Whatever y'all. Was you in on that, Shane?
I just came in on the.
We got three hundred and fifty thousand. We finally got our credit back from, and it's basically what, we can't pay it on the principal for two years. So, we's talking about putting the majority of it or all of it, whatever y'all decide. And to say something that would draw, you know, all the interest we could while it's sitting there.
It's not me.
But, that's up to y'all.
Whatever gets us the best payout over the next.
What do y'all think, some or all of it?
It really don't move different. I'd rather, you know, like say you're gonna get
We could keep.
Four percent.
Or if it's three fifty, if we put three hundred in there and kept fifty out.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be.
We can take it, some of it out.
You, yeah, I mean, you don't have to do the whole amount. You can hold that out and put it in a savings that would at least.
Put any of it in a CD.
No, you don't have to, but.
But if you can't pay on, uh, you can't pay on the principal, so.
That's why I wanted to try to get all we could out of it.
Well, yeah, that, your CD's gonna be your best bet for a year. That's what we have to do.
That was part of this deal that the state offered because the interest was so low that you couldn't pay down the principal for the first five years.
Okay, so we need a motion to put
That's, that's.
Three hundred thousand in the CD.
To y'all, I've just.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying. So we're talking three hundred thousand in the CD and fifty thousand five hundred and twenty-eight in savings.
If that's what y'all want to do. I mean, I'm, that's.
What do you think, Jimmy?
We gotta think about what we repairing before we just put fifty thousand and what it's gonna cost us taking another fifty thousand out of that CD. It's gonna be expensive if you have to repair something. It's gonna be expensive if you have to repair them panels out there. I mean, it's, it don't matter.
Now, we do have some additional panels that are left.
And we've got, still got a little warranty left. Now, we had to pay the labor.
That was my next thing if we had any warranty.
We got another year and a half or two on the warranty. I think it was like five year. So.
I mean, you don't have to decide tonight. We can.
No, if y'all want to think about it.
Yeah, but we'll lose a day's worth of interest.
You're gonna lose a month of interest.
That's, that's right. That's a chunk of interest if you're gonna lose it.
Do different amounts and do several CDs, you could.
Which we gotta bid it out, so y'all wouldn't be able to decide till next meeting anyway.
So I'll make a motion, we put three hundred thousand in the CD and the remaining balance.
Okay.
Fifty thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. Savings in a savings account.
Balance in the savings.
We're bidding out a three hundred thousand dollar CD and putting the balance, which is fifty thousand five twenty-eight oh three.
And save a savings account?
Yes.
A second.
So a motion, and Janie second, all in favor, say aye. So a motion, and Janie second, all in favor say aye.
Okay.
All opposed, motion two.
I wish I'd get a letter like that.
Yeah.
I do have, I do have a question about the solar panels while we're on this. Is there any way we can get a breakdown of everything that the solar panels are doing for us?
Yeah.
The air, the, all the buildings it's affecting, the air conditioning systems, uh, can we not, can we get a breakdown of what that is doing for us?
Yeah, I can, 'cause none of y'all are here, mayor, y'all either want. But yeah, we can. I can get that for you, for, I mean.
Are you wanting to see electric bills where we're getting credits on all of them?
I wanna see where, what, does it, I'm, I'm, I'm being asked what they're doing, so can we, is there any way?
It's paying the cities utility bills, what we're making off the solar panels.
Yeah.
There's a.
The credit going to.
Yes.
The credit is going to the.
Yeah.
To city, city electric bills.
Each department pays a certain amount, which water and sewer and all pays the most.
Right.
But.
They're getting the largest benefit of the utility bills.
Every department getting a little bit of it, but so.
Percentage of it. But yeah, we can, I mean, yeah, we can have that next meeting. We can have something.
Yeah.
Everybody's.
I don't know if energy can send something like an annual deal to show, 'cause.
Well, it may not be down to the exact thing, but we can show primarily what it's being used for. I mean.
It just affects all the energy bills, but I don't know if they can give me a printout that says. You know, print something out or I'm gonna have to copy all the bills.
That itemizes it.
You know, for the whole year.
Yeah.
We'll try to, we'll try to break it down as much as we can, so.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, do you know the percentage that go into each apartment, like the street and water?
No, and, and right now the bill I get, it just tells me what I owe. It doesn't really say.
It just give you the credit.
At the bottom, it tells you there's a credit that's been applied, but it tells you a kilowatt, you don't really know.
Yeah.
I could blow the bill or something.
We'll try to figure it out, see where every time. Is anybody here from the library? Now, uh, Public Works Director Robert Sullivan.
Good evening.
Hey, man.
Uh, last month we fixed six mains. Uh, three of them was on Rappis Road. Contractors ran over one, but moved down a water line one, county guys one.
Your brother.
Then we fixed a few service lines, but what really slowing us down a lot is that eighty-three. Locates, we're just busy locating every day.
Yeah, there's.
And they just come in, they come in, and we fixed one server last month.
Did y'all, what was that today, the water line? Was that them hit it?
Yeah, they, I, they uh, whenever the water contractors. Put in, they didn't go straight across for the meter, they wanted an angle, and I marked it straight. Cause they didn't have no wire when I put it on, so.
So what are we, what are we doing if, if, if they hit a water, are we keeping up with the cost that?
Yeah, and they've got so much.
Money.
Yeah, put back to fix anything.
And he, he gives me the parts, the, he like, what do you need? And he, he gave us the parts to fix it, and we just fixed it.
There's some labor there in. There's some labor involved in.
Yeah, but if they miss market, if Rob miss markets it because.
If they miss market, I don't understand.
Because there's not a locate wire on it or something. I mean, you can't, it's really hard to kinda make somebody pay for it.
Yeah.
I'm saying that, but I'm talking about a few years.
Yeah, if, if we mark it right and they hit it, yeah, they're gonna pay.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, this is your, uh, business market, huh?
Yeah, we definitely be paid for that. And then we're flushing lines beginning May fifth or May thirtieth. So I want everybody to know if your. Water gets discolored or anything, we're flushing all the lines in town, which need to do that every year. And uh, to keep everything up in good shape and all. And we got, what is the? Photo, half oats on the uh. Yeah, the paddle wheel.
I know they're high.
Yes.
That's that place in Cherry Valley.
Yeah, it's House Industries.
Well, almost two.
Oh, yeah.
It is, uh. Yeah. Thirty-two and thirty-two thousand and two thousand something for delivery.
So we've got a half five?
Well, we're just doing this one now, and then we're gonna bid out the other. But this was a necessity, our main one went out.
Yeah.
And. Which all that rain and stuff saved us last week.
Oh, yeah.
But. If it's getting up in the eighties, it'll get bad in a hurry.
But so buying this one is not gonna affect us down the road buying for more?
No.
You know what I mean? It's price wise in a.
Now, this is just a single, we're doing this and then we'll start from there. But uh, and I know, which we've all, which, you know, we've tried everything from farm paddle wheel, I, we've tried everything in the world. But if it's not completely sealed stainless steel product, it ain't gonna hold up long at all. The chemicals in that'll eat a metal one up. I mean, few months, it'd be done.
I make a motion to buy this one for thirty-two thousand and the two thousand dollar delivery is thirty-four thousand.
Okay. Motion Jim Ed to do the, what was it, uh? Thirty-four thousand even.
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion two.
Alright, you're getting.
Thanks, Ross. What's that, sir? Oh, we got write offs, so.
Yeah.
If I can find them. Are these write offs as?
I know they're water bills.
It's old stuff that we hadn't been able to collect or.
They move and don't know where they go.
Yeah, and which we've got a lot of cities that are in the same deal, like if they move off and go to another town and they owe us. They can't get their water turned on till they pay us. So we. That helps some. I still don't know what I done. Anything? Behind what? I need a helper. Yeah, most of these. Well, it shows you they're. Mostly in twenty-four. What is it?
Yeah, they'll put these in that database and try to collect them.
But.
You have to have a motion to write it off.
Motion to write these off.
I'll make that motion.
Motion Janie to write these off. Second. Raymond, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Now, the police department, Chief Keith Graham.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, man.
I hope everybody's gonna welcome all the rain and flooding that we had, so. Attached in your packets is our monthly reports last month. We made a lot of felony arrests, a lot of misdemeanor arrests last month. That was kinda. The focus, uh, the jail is, for anybody asked, jail is open and operational. We are having to man it ourselves until we can hire a jailer. The one jailer that we had in the background process, we had to kick him out at the last segment because he wouldn't complete the steps necessary for him to be hired. We gave him every, we gave him four weeks to get it done. Doesn't take that long. So we had to kick him out, but we've got, the application's open, so if you know anybody that would like to be a jailer that doesn't have anything on the records and they're eighteen years old, we're more than happy to hire. Just have to go through our, our background stuff. And then the only action I've, that I have is for our meals for prisoners. We have to have a, an M O U understanding with the Loneup County Sheriff's Office about us purchasing the meals from them. Meal prices are basically, you know, just market value. Right now, they, about five dollars a day covers meals for one prisoner for three meals. So at the time, we're not talking a ton of money or anything like that, but we just have to have something that's less.
Should the county provide all this?
Yes, sir. We will just be responsible to pick them up at designated times, yeah.
I make a motion to accept the M O U from Loneup County Sheriff's Office.
Motion to expect, to accept the memorandum from uh, Loneup County Sheriff's Office from Jim Ed, second by Raymond, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Chief. I got, um, all our uh, jailers, are you, I know you're certified in training, are you gonna cert, are you gonna certify our jailers?
Yes.
Through training? We won't have to send them over?
I believe fifty-five hours of training. They will do everything in-house from pepper spray, taser, and all, so. Everything will be done in-house, so they don't have to go anywhere. Give me a week and a half and I'd have them trained up.
Did y'all advertise, you advertise for this?
Yes, ma'am, we advertise on, uh, on our website. I've posted on a couple of times on our Facebook page. I've talked to some uh, schools, colleges and whatnot.
Yeah.
Uh, about any career fairs they're having. They're starting to have some career fairs coming up, so we'll be at them trying to get uh. Jailers and potential officers down the, get the highest quality candidates that we can.
You have any questions, Josh? Now, the uh, community center, Mr. Mike Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mike.
Long month, long wet, rainy month. Uh, memberships, uh, held on pretty, pretty uh, steady. We're up almost uh, seventy members from the month before, even with all the rain. We've got a, a vending machine and we made more money in about five weeks than we made in bidding in all time. But uh, some events that we've got going on, member of the month, uh, Trey Reed. Uh, we're having a, uh, emergency preparedness fair. I've got a lady that I've hired, she, she does dance classes and she's come to me and wanted to have a. Uh. Fair. And I thought, yes, it's a good time, so uh, we're gonna plan that for May seventeenth. And uh. I know she's got a couple of strong chasers, uh, she's uh. Called the TV stations and uh, see if we can get somebody out, but I think it's a, uh, it'll be a good thing to have for the, for the community. Line dancing, uh, we, we changed the name. Uh, we call it s- southern soul line dancing, you know, that's popular these days, so uh, we're, we're, we're starting that, uh. Uh, I'm gonna send my wife to the class. And uh, here's muscle of um, lifeguard training. Uh, I think since we, uh, since the last meeting, I had two. And I have one. Uh, one of them called me, it's supposed to be at work on Friday night, I mean, Friday afternoon, he called me third way, he called me, texted me Thursday night, about eight-thirty. I quit, so, but uh, uh, we're, we're making it. Uh, there's class forming, uh, coming this week, Thursday, Friday and Saturday at U A L R. Uh, and I talked to the, uh, the instructor and they're gonna let me invoice them. Uh, I know some of the, one of the parents, she said she had to, she could pay. The other parent. I guess they could pay, but Wendell has agreed to uh, scholarship one, so I think what I'm gonna do is. He's still, if he's still gonna help, take the three hundred dollars and split it between those two and then all I pay, I think a hundred and seventy-five dollars, it'll be three twenty-five. But, so he is gonna let me invoice it, so they probably won't have to pay till maybe the end of May, so give them.
I'll just, I'll try to get some more money where it'll.
Uh, and uh, I called around, called Jacksonville and I asked them how did they hire their lifeguards and. They do like a, a contract that the uh, kids don't actually assign, the parents do.
Parents do. That's what we were talking about before.
And, but they, they make them pay, I think, a hundred and twenty-five dollars and parents will have to cover the, the rest and. As they work, if they don't work out or quit before time, then they hold it out, out of their last paycheck, which here, we don't. We don't hold, uh, we don't hold weeks out of the paycheck, so that may be something. But uh, we're, we're moving right along. I have a company. That'll send somebody down uh, for twenty-five hundred dollars and train as many lifeguards as we want. But uh. That's a little steep, but hopefully, you know, we, we can get. Anything's better than one.
Enough interest, it'd be worth it, you know?
Yeah, anything, cause I know, uh, we've got prom season and graduation coming up and uh. I hate the whole kids, you know, accountable for going to prom or missing the graduation. Uh, so that's uh, where we are. Hopefully, uh, uh, next council meeting, I'll have two or three more.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Fire Department Chief Justin Wittenberg.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Only thing I've got tonight is our monthly report. It's changed just a little bit and I haven't got to figure out how to pull all my stuff out of my software, but we had seventy-two calls last month. The way it's going, we'll probably have closer to that this month due to the storms and all that stuff. Any questions?
Guess so. Thank you. Old business, is uh, solar site stuff, any questions on that?
It looks like we're ahead of what they anticipated.
Any questions, folks?
Is McKinstry the ones that maintain it?
No.
Who maintains them?
Uh. Yeah.
Is the, actually the contractor. McKinstry is the company.
Who do we think did the maintenance on it?
We paid McKinstry and they, and Seal Solar worked for them. They're the ones that installed it.
And so how long will we pay them to maintain it?
Our maintenance.
Forever?
That we have is, the first time was five years.
Okay.
You have to redo it now. Now, we've got uh, bid results from our wastewater, which is on. Uh, we had to rebid it because it come in. Three hundred seven thousand too high. uh, we had to rebid it, cause it come in three hundred seven thousand too high, we're just doing Fletcher, Brown, um, uh, I can't remember where all the. But we got our bids in, uh, uh, J and R Contractors, uh, I think Palestine, we're gonna, they were the lowest bid. I just need.
Four forty-six, three thirty?
But I just need y'all's approval for that, for them to get started.
How much was our? Grant?
Huh?
Didn't you get a grant? I mean, how much was that grant? How much was that for?
Half million dollars, but time, everybody gets their little piece out of it, we had about that left for.
I make a motion to approve the bid from J and R Contractors at four forty-six, three thirty.
One second, who's somebody, yes, second?
And then it said to go, uh, the, take a little bid, J and R Contractors, no seconded, good deal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll keep going, pulling to when they can start, and, uh, soon as I get done with this, I can apply for something else, so. I've been waiting to get that done, so I can turn around and get, try to get another grant, so we can finish. New business is. Ordinance number eight twenty-four, an ordinance to vacate the alley running north and south through block twenty-two, Hickson Reynolds survey, the township of Lono, which is between Park and Jefferson, I think, actually. Yeah.
Need a motion to put it on the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make it.
Janey made motion to put eight twenty-four on the board. Second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ordinance number eight twenty-four, an ordinance vacating the alley running north and south through block twenty-two, Hickson Reynolds survey to the town of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas. Whereas the petition was duly filed with the City Council of the City of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas, on the eighteenth of March, twenty twenty-five, praying the City Council closed the alley running north and south as described in the original plat, filed in the Circuit Clerk's office in and of the County of Lono, Arkansas. Whereas after due notice, as required by law, the Council has, at the time and place mentioned in the notice, heard all persons, persons desiring to be heard in the questions, and has ascertained that the alley running north and south through block twenty-two, Hickson Reynolds survey to the town of Lono, has herefore been dedicated to the public use of an alley, has not been actually used by the public as an alley for a period of at least five years, subsequent to the filing of the petition, and that all of the owners of property abandoning the alley have filed with the Council their written consent to the abandonment, and the public interest and welfare will not be affected by the closing of said alley. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Lono, Arkansas, section one, the City of Lono, Arkansas hereby releases, vacates and abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally, and in to the alley which runs north and south through block twenty-two, Hickson Reynolds survey to the town of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas. Section two, a copy of the ordinance duly certified by the City Clerk shall be filed in the office of the Recorder of the County and recorded in the deed records of said county. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
And the motion accept first reading, so we have a, we have a letter from Miss O'Kane also?
Uh, I guess I, this has all been through planning and zoning.
And we have a letter from the people on the corner of Pine and Park?
They don't have but the alley.
Trey owns on both sides of the alley? Okay.
But Miss Mo, Miss O'Kane signed the petition.
Make motion set first reading.
Make set first reading by Janey.
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Can we do the second, third reading title only?
Rating title only by Janey. Second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance number eight twenty-four, an ordinance vacating the alley running north and south through block twenty-two, Hickson Reynolds survey to the town of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas.
Motion set second, third reading.
Motion to accept second, third reading by Janey.
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. I need a motion for mercy clause, no mercy, so a motion to adopt. Motion to adopt by Wendell.
Second.
Second by Janey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right. Now, uh, oh, we've got this new business. It's, uh, contract with the City of Lono for our water operations. Uh, I'm getting, uh, Mr. Cummings, he took, uh, Tom's place out here, uh, Grand Prairie, and he's gonna be over, watch over a water plant and do all the, whatever he needs doing for the next few months. We're just gonna be a monthly, he's just, he's helping us out, and he said he'll do it for a thousand dollars a month. But that way he'll be in control and signing off and.
We gotta have it, don't we? Make the motion, we accept it.
Motion from Janey to accept the contract for services, second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I need approval to pay bills.
Motion.
Motion to pay bills by Jim Ed.
Second.
Second by Stan, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Uh, announcements of planning zones, Monday is scheduled, Monday marks, uh, April, April seventeenth. Monday spring cleanup begins next Saturday, and we'll be closed Sunday for Easter, but it'll be all that next week till the, through the twenty-sixth, so.
Now, they will come around?
Yes, they will come around.
Do people need to call?
Uh, they'll be circling, but if they don't get by, please call, and they'll come by and get whatever you need them to get. And, uh, but they'll be out there all day, so anything you need, just call us. Um, I did want to ask everybody, we are opening bids on May first for the twelve inch water line, on the golf course. It, it was actually in the paper this last weekend, it'll be running for two weeks, and then we'll open bids on the first, then y'all can approve. See if we got best bid, uh, our meeting in May. And hopefully we'll get that done pretty quick this summer, and I can, hopefully the background this year gets started out there, we've been waiting a long time. Uh, trying to think. We've got some other things going, but nothing definite just yet, but, uh. Yeah, yeah, there. Open up. Sharks is gonna open up sometime next month, and, uh, yes, uh, thirty-one is fixing to be paid from the red light all the way to BB. Matter of fact, they're doing the towns first, they're starting in BB on the twenty-first, and soon as they get done there, he said he'd probably be here by the next Monday, and they'll be working from seven at night till seven in the morning. Through town, because of traffic, that way they won't disrupt too much. They're gonna be milling this down two inches and putting that much back, so we'll have a nice smooth, like our new rubber bass out there. Yeah, that's, that's all I wanna do, I, I hope you didn't mind just hug and kiss, cause people might, getting us a new rubber, we might stop and hug and kiss yourself. All right, that's all I've got right now.
Make the.
Other things going on, and hopefully a lot of good things this year.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Janey.
Second.
Second by Jim Ed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.